Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of April 24th, 2019. I'd like to remind everyone this is being broadcast live. It is also being recorded for use at a later date if needed. So please keep that in mind. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Also would you join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The only item on the agenda tonight is going to be the budget. Just to give a quick recap, at the last meeting, which was approximately 10 or 12 days ago whenever we had it, we had an assessment at the start of the meeting at 15.1. We ended at the end of the meeting at 12 percent.
12.5.
Pardon me?
12.5 percent was our end.
We're here to discuss that this evening. The superintendent's going to give us some numbers to go by. We've heard from different finance committees and selectmen, and so we're going to take all that into account and see where the assessment is and what we're going to do this evening. It could end up at 12.5 at the end of the meeting. It could end up at less. But keep in mind, it can't end up at any more than 12.5. I just want to make that clear. And this is an assessment, again, I hate to keep being redundant, but the more people I talk to, some people are still a little bit confused. They think that our budget was up 15.1 percent. This is not a percentage of the total budget of the school district. This is an assessment to the towns independently. So, does anyone have any questions before I go to the superintendent? Anyone from the committee? Gallery, if you're going to speak this evening, please get up and state your name and address, what town you're from. Speak loudly, because I'm a little hard to hear, and we'll try to get through this.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. So, committee members in your packet, we've included a new assessment update showing the 12 and 1/2 percent assessment that was given at the last school committee meeting. You will also see a document that goes from a 12 and 1/2 assessment down to a 6 and 1/2 and the positions that it affects. These positions aren't necessarily in any order. They could change at any given time, but this is the amount of the, we stopped at 6 and 1/2, because that was the number that was kind of floated around at the last meeting. At 12 and 1/2, we're at a level service budget. As we trickle down, each half percent is about $111,000. Each teaching position, we looked at at $65,000. As you see, there are teachers on that. There are central office administrators. There's technology services. There's facilities. There's paraprofessionals, and there's duty aides. These are all people that we've put on to get to 6 and 1/2. I want to remind the committee that we've already taken $292,000 out of our initial level service budget, and the committee took $561,237 out of E and D to get us to this point. So we've already reduced $853,237 from the original number that we projected at level service. So we've already taken some reductions, not necessarily in people. At 12 and 1/2, we lose no people. As we move forward or down the scale, and as we provided for you up the scale, those are our actual people. Now, I will say also, we do have some retirements. We do have some resignations, and some people will not be returning. This doesn't mean that all these people on the page will not have positions, but it will mean, if we get to 6 and 1/2, and again, I stop there, there will be people that are in the district that will not have positions next year. Others might fill those retirements or those resignations. We did hand out 62 personal, I think, pink slips on Thursday and Friday after our last meeting, and then mailed a few home. So I think it was a total of 64, 65. I'm not really sure. We met with each non-professional status teacher to let them know their rights under the law, under the contract, and where we were at within the district. And that's where we stand right now. So this is why I'm asking the committee to, you know, I haven't had any real conversations with folks. Did have a brief conversation with Mr. Anderson from Whitman FinCom. I said I'd have a follow-up conversation with him tomorrow after the committee meeting today. I believe some information came out from Whitman yesterday as far as where the FinCom was making a recommendation, and that's where we stand.
Again, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have to make a decision this evening on a final number. I mean, the final number might be at the 12 and 1/2, which we've already had, as I said before. But I spoke to Rick on the way in too, and anybody else from either one of the towns, I know both town administrators are here if they'd like to speak or bring anything. Rick, would you like to get up and tell us approximately where the FinCom is?
Sure.
We'll try to not pepper you with questions, but I'm sure there's going to be a few things.
Yes, so I appreciate the opportunity. After being thoroughly admonished by Mr. Boyce that last meeting, I figured I better make an appearance here. I think there was some blasphemous reference to God in there too, so.
Was there? I'll strike that if you need.
That's fine. But in all seriousness, I'm glad to be here. I'm glad to be part of this process. So last night, while most people here were riveted to game seven, the finance committee was hammering away at our second budget. As you know, our original goal was to create two budgets. One, to prepare for our worst-case scenario, and two, to prepare for a successful increase to the available levy through either a Proposition 2 and 1/2 override or a debt exclusion. So last night, we just about wrapped up the second budget. I'll talk on the numbers we recommend and give you a big picture plan that the Whitman Finance Committee feels will enable the town to have a sustainable budget into the next five years. First of all, I want to say that we have been working with all departments, including our biggest department here and the Board of Selectmen, to develop a budget for this cycle and to make some long-term plans for the future budgets. It is, it's definitely a tough road ahead, for sure, but we need to continue an open dialogue with all of our stakeholders to make this work. So where we are right now with respect to the school district is a recommendation to set line 175 in Article 2 at $14,398,151. This represents an increase of 8 and 1/2 over last year's line. We have also reduced salaries from all non-union personnel within town departments by 1 percent. It is our sincere hope that the administrative staff for the school district will follow the pattern, and in the next collective bargaining sessions, we hope we will get a collective commitment to rein in salaries across the board. We also recommend town meeting to take the first step in creating a pay-as-you-ride program for students who avail themselves to non-mandated busing. We are recommending cutting line 178 of Article 2, non-mandated busing, from $397,604 to $173,471. Additionally, we fully support the Whitman Board of Selectmen's decision to move forward with their Proposition 2 and 1/2 override in the fall. I want to stress that all these things have to happen if we're going to have a sustainable budget. So in the coming years, we sincerely hope that the board will recognize the difficulties that our two towns face as you deliberate your assessment. We fully support what you do, but we really need your help going forward. And that's about all. I take some questions if you have any.
Anyone have any questions?
What was that number on the non-mandated busing? Please.
So line 178 of our Article 2 is $397,604, and we're recommending that that line read So our Article 2 is up on the Whitman website too, if you want to take a look at the numbers specifically.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah. So that's good, Justin, thank you. So we're reducing the salary increases to 1 percent. So, and like I said, and what we're really trying to do is prime the pump. We really need to have a hard look at all the bargaining units and try to look forward and get our spending in a sustainable kind of a lineup. Yes?
Can I just ask, Rick, what were the salary increases? You said they were down to 1 percent. What was the original number?
Well, we took Article 2, which includes all salary lines. And we took the number and then reduced it by 1 percent, the recommended number.
Okay. It was a 2 percent recommendation? Thank you, Justin.
Any other question?
Fred?
On the salary, that 2 percent to 1 percent, that is contracts, non-contracted?
These are all non-union employees. Obviously, we can't do anything with the collective bargaining agreements that are in place. Like I said, what we hope to do is dovetail off of this and see if we can get the bargaining units to follow suit in the coming years.
Mike?
Jeff, is that feasible? Is it legal, this $224,133,000?
For buses?
Yeah, is that legal?
So, yeah, so Whitman and Hanson both provide non-mandated busing to students within a 1 and 1/2 miles at no cost. Most towns outside of regional districts charge for those students to ride the bus. So it was a comment that I made to the FinCom and to the Selectmen that they might want to look at that. We're trying to balance that number. I cut it out totally, and that would be inefficient for all of us. But now with this 173, keeping some funding in there, what I would ask the town of Whitman to do would be to look at avenues for a pay-to-go necessarily, some way, because if we cut all non-mandated busing, we would take a substantial hit, because we're still contracted for some of those buses.
Right, and with respect to the contractors in place, that's why we wanted to wait until you had more information about it. The other reason, leaving some money in the line too, there will be people that will fall into a position where they can't afford any other option. So, you know, maybe the opportunity for them to segue off of it with some money left in the line.
Well, Rick, there's also a part of that where some of that busing, as you know, if you drive by any of the schools, the SUVs are lined up outside dropping kids off. Some of those kids are not riding the bus, they're probably on that list.
Right.
So, you know, that could, I'm just throwing that out, is that could come into play.
Right. It's a tough decision. I mean, it's been talked about before, but I think this is an opportunity to take the first step, that's all. All right?
Fred?
And this isn't directed at you. I was just wondering if there's anyone here from Hanson that, you know, would care to speak, or do they want to?
Well, we're going to get to that. Let's finish with Rick.
I appreciate it, Hanson. Steve, you got a question?
Anyone else? Mr. Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Rick. I know you're always here, in mind and soul and body. I walk the halls with you.
I do my best.
At the old Whitman-Hanson. So we go back a very long way.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. I now feel the anxiety at the last meeting that any of these, my predecessors felt when I was doing the same job you were. And I know the work you're doing, and I thank you. I apologize for any outbursts. I can't go as far as offering you my game five, round two tickets.
No.
Because I've already texted my niece. But I'll keep you in mind.
I appreciate it.
If I can find something.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick.
Thanks, Rick. Can I just add, one of the things that came out at the last meeting was concern about some of our teaching staff, but also our paraprofessional staff. What I wanted to tell the committee, we're not going to reduce any paraprofessionals that are assigned to any students or are part of any IEPs. Some of the pairs that we're looking at are non-instruct, are instructional pairs, outside of IEPs, that we supply and give assistance to teachers in the classroom and out of the classroom. Okay? So I know there was some concern, like the pairs we're going to lose that are connected to certain programs and to certain students with IEPs. Those pairs are non-negotiable, so to speak, because of where we're at. I just wanted to clarify.
Just a quick question on it. Did any of them receive pink slips?
No, because they're on a yearly assignment.
Okay.
But we had a conversation with the association based upon our conversations tonight.
Okay.
And at town meeting, we'll let people know if, who, and when. One of the things that we have with paraprofessionals, it's cyclical. A lot of folks leave. So if, we might not be filling a position if someone leaves. A lot of our pairs are teachers in training. They're at Bridgewater State or whatever. They're trying to get a degree to move into a role. They leave, they resign over the summer. We just wouldn't replace that unless we needed to.
Okay. I know Frank's here. Frank, do you have anything you'd like to add before I move? I know he's hiding over there somewhere. I knew you were hiding over there.
As you know, we've been working hard to come up with a appropriation that, while not what you're looking for, would be something to move forward with. The numbers that Rick presented tonight still reflect a structural deficit, particularly since the number we've identified for non-mandated busing is not necessarily a number we can lock in. The Selectmen have supported a 6 and 1/2 percent budget. The Finance Committee is recommending an 8 and 1/2 percent budget. At this point, I can't tell you where we're going to end up. I do know that the Finance Committee is meeting again next Tuesday, and we're looking at all of our options. We do intend to seek an override in the fall. That override, if successful, will be an all-inclusive request. It will recognize future needs for capital and future needs for the departments, including the schools. I don't know what we can do mid-year should we be successful. That's, would be a topic for another day and some pretty creative meetings with Whitman-Hanson and the schools. So I'm not ruling that out, but I can't tell you at this point that's something that would necessarily happen. It's something I'd like to see happen. We're going to stay focused on developing a sustainable model for our budget, and that's going to cause some stress for the school system as well. Because, as you know, in the last few years, the budget growth does not reflect the available revenues. So long as Chapter 70 stays moderately where it is, I believe your increase this year with the latest budget is $120,000 some odd thousand. That would mean if you stay on mark with your budget growth, we'd be looking at another $2 and 1/2 to $3 million in the next year. And I can tell you with absolute certainty, that's not supportable. So the challenge of getting this budget together by the end of this fiscal year is the beginning of a greater challenge, which is finding a way to make all these things fit and work. So I don't, I don't want to look at this as, hey, we're getting there, we're going to be okay. The challenge becomes harder as we move forward.
Any questions for Fred?
The Board of Selectmen meeting next week?
Yes, on the 30th.
Thank you, Frank. Mike, or Kenny, I know they're both here.
Can I just add something right now?
Go ahead.
So with that 8 and 1/2 recommendation, that's a budget increase, not assessment increase, but that's a budget increase of 3.66 percent to our budget. Okay, that's at 8 and 1/2. That would also mean we would cut another $897,511 off of our budget, leaving the total cut to our budget off the original plan of $1,750,748. Just want to make it equitable between the departments.
Does everybody understand what that means? Right?
Pardon me?
Does everybody understands those numbers?
So, yeah, I'll ask a follow-up to that. So I think, I get it, we're in a tough spot all around. We're in a tough spot. So I think what I'm hearing you say to a large extent is the school budget as presented was for level services.
Correct.
Right? And what I think I just heard you say was, we're reducing those level services by $1.7 million.
That, $1.75748.
$1.75.
I think people forget about the addition of E and D every year.
Right.
And they think it's just free cash. It's not free cash. It's money that we keep. We cut, and we also cut, and it's substantial, not when you're talking $53 million, but $292,000 we took out of different lines that we're projecting, that we projected we might need next year. And then again, at the 8 and 1/2, looking at another $897,511 of cut. So the district itself, from the level service budget we presented, would be down $1.750748. And I will, I've been beating this horse for a while. Unfunded mandates, underfunded mandates, special education costs, which at least the legislator, legislature is looking at now. They have not looked this hard, and there's a better vibe in the superintendent community than before, but it hasn't happened yet. I feel with the additions of the programs that we're putting in, we should be able to maintain or get our special education out of district costs under control in the future.
Good. Just to follow on, so that 1.7, if we're working off a $53 million, just, I'm using round numbers.
Yes.
Right? We're talking about roughly a 3 percent cut, roughly.
Correct.
To level services. So I think that becomes the struggle, at least for me, of, and I get, you know, and I really don't want to turn this into a department versus department discussion, but I think that's where the equity, we just have to think about that, right? If we're taking 3 percent out of level services of the school system, are we taking 3 percent out of level services from the other areas? It may not be feasible this go-around. We may just be in too tough a spot. But when we talk about sustainability, there's the financial sustainability, but then there's the sustainability of the educational delivery model, right? And at some point, we start to put ourselves really at risk about, okay, pick one. We can have finance, we could make, we could make a financial stable budget today, but what will that do to education? That's not sustainable either. So this is, this is what's going to plague us for the months and years.
And I don't disagree, because we're in a tough spot in both communities right now, and I don't want to devastate either department, but I also want the public to know that we're taking a hit. If it stays as is, or whatever recommendations come out outside of 12 and 1/2, and outside of the 12 and 1/2 we've already cut from level services, but it didn't impact people. And that's the piece that I think I want to stress, is people, once we get into that, those are people's jobs and their livelihoods. And I've heard that in multiple meetings from different departments about losing people, and they don't want to lose their people. Neither do I. So I look at the committee, our job is to, and I want to follow up on Chris, on how to deliver education. I can put teachers in classrooms as well, but if they don't have the supplies, or the technology, or the tools to teach kids, we're not providing the education. It's like the fire department or the police department not having a hose, or a car, or a communication system. We've been, we're at a deficit now. The past eight years, we haven't provided the tools to the teachers. We have, we've been working on this since October. One of the things that we've committed to is providing teachers with tools. We've been working on math, ELA, and curriculum all year. The budget numbers aren't awesome, but we have a plan in place to do, to deliver education even at a deficit, although it's not the education I want to continue to deliver. And I've heard the override number thrown out. I don't want to talk about the override right now, but moving forward, we can enhance our and our sustainability, our curriculum and our instruction in foreign language, in social emotional learning, and in kindergarten, which has been the, which has been the thing we've talked about for 10 years, if we move forward. But that's not the discussion here, but I wanted to stress the 1.7 of cut, and some of that will be, or 897 will be people.
The one thing I want to bring up, and this is, probably goes more to the sustainability of everything, but I think it's time that we get into a very high gear and start looking at our entire budget, the way we have things, and where we can make cuts or adjustments that we can save money. And some of the things we could do may be substantial. You know, we need to sharpen around for things. We need to look at, you know, how we insure our buildings, how we insure everything. And we need to make adjustments, and we need to look at what we need to do in order to move forward. And I think that we really need to put it into high gear and not wait.
Well, one of the things, and if I could just respond, I believe in contracts as well, and we just finished a contract. And what I heard Mr. Anderson say is, in our next contract cycle, to make sure we're looking at every possible thing, as they will be doing in the town of Whitman as well. Right now, we just finished, we're in year, ending of year one in our, in our A, B, C, and D contract, and I'm hesitant to dig into contracts if both towns that we're working with aren't digging into their collective bargaining units as well.
Mike, you're standing there very peacefully. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really don't have much to add to this conversation, other than I will very quickly agree with what Fred just said and what I think a lot of people here have just said, that there's work that needs to be done going forward. And the problem that this district is facing is not a district problem. It's a problem throughout the Commonwealth, and it's not something that's going to be solved here in this room. It's not something that's going to be solved in the town of Whitman or the town of Hanson. And I really don't know what the resolution is. As far as the conversation and the decision that's going to be made this evening, all I have to offer, and it's, I don't think anything that's new to anyone who's sitting here, is the Board of Selectmen in the town of Hanson voted a 6 and 1/2 percent increase. And we don't have a representative, I don't believe, from my FinCom, but the FinCom is also supporting a 6 and 1/2 percent increase to the budget. Are there things to do in the coming year immediately? Yes, there are. But that is the message that I have to deliver tonight, and that is the official, as of this moment, position of the town of Hanson.
Thanks, Mike. Any question? Rick, Chris, go ahead.
When does FinCom and the Selectmen meet again? Tuesday?
They meet Tuesday, but it's not on the agenda to have a discussion like this. I cannot speak for when the FinCom meets again. We do obviously, as normal, have a meeting scheduled, at least the Board of Selectmen, I believe the FinCom has a meeting scheduled, you know, a half an hour, an hour or so before the town meeting. But the next meeting of the Board of Selectmen is to go over the warrant, but not specifically to have a discussion as to where the budget is or could be.
Fred?
His non-mandated busing and being able to charge for non-mandated busing, has that been brought up?
No, it has not, Fred. Has not. To the best of my knowledge, it has not been brought up in my discussions with the Board of Selectmen, with my accountant. I cannot speak to whether or not that's been discussed with the FinCom. I did not attend their last meeting.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Kind of heard from both towns on where they are at. We are at 12 and 1/2. Would anyone from the gallery like to add anything?
Just real quick on that last remark, I thought, Sean Kane, Forest Street, and Whitman, I thought Ms. Kement made a remark at the beginning of the Hanson Selectmen meeting, where she said, although she's voting for 6 percent, it was understood that it's still, you know, in discussion. So just to make that point.
I wasn't there, so I can't comment.
Not to belittle what this gentleman just said, but the Board of Selectmen that evening, yesterday evening, voted 6 and 1/2 percent.
Okay, committee? Fred?
I would like to see us get together one more meeting after the Selectmen and the FinComs have had a chance to meet next week.
That was sort of the plan for next Wednesday. We're at 12 and 1/2 percent. You've heard from both towns. Thoughts? Thoughts?
We've got right up until town meeting to make this, the local assessments. To make the assessment in what gets assessed to the two towns. I mean, even during town meeting. And I'm not looking to say go to that extreme, but I just came actually from our Lyma Theory Collaborative, I'm on the Budget Subcommittee. I bet you that's probably on that end of all the things that all of us in education do. I mean, that, that, that's one thing. You almost would have to bring in analysts and teams and figure out this and that. And they deal with four people. And getting at my point is, we still sit, we, we just got out of Ways and Means in the House. We still sit at a point that through all those amendments, I don't know if something's going to rise out of the soil and grow and be something that's, that's going to be beneficial to us. I totally agree with, this is not only a Commonwealth thing, I actually think it's probably nationwide. And we do so good with public education being number one in Massachusetts, that sometimes we get ignored a little bit on the, on the national level as well. But I, yeah, I, I think the Wednesday would be fine, but I just, there's just, there's so much that's going, that's just going on with, with what is still out there. I mean, I, I couldn't even, I couldn't even mention a recommendation or anything, Mr. Chair. I don't think, unless I was hearing others from my other colleagues, anything else.
Before I go to Mr. Small, we have to answer your question. We have waited till town meeting before I had this change in town meeting.
Right.
But it is probably the most difficult model to ever do. It forces FinComs, it forces changes, it forces. I'd like to see us,
Oh, yeah.
You know, not go until that date.
Right.
It makes everybody totally uneasy, and it becomes problematic. It's adjustments on the fly. It doesn't give any, anybody that, moving forward, including the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, on where we're going school-wise, it still leaves everybody. And I know that's an option. But it's just, it's something we should think about maybe a little bit harder. Fred?
The House budget, which in some circles that I travel in is being known as the Monday Night Massacre. Keep in mind that our House leaders met in private, behind closed doors, not in an open meeting, to sit and strike down most of the amendments that were put forward. Right now, coming out of the House, despite Josh Cutler's valiant efforts, first at $100 per pupil minimum increase, then an amendment for $50 per pupil minimum increase, it sits at $30. I did have a conversation with Senator Brady, because now the budget goes to the Senate. He's aware of our plights, and he is going to fight as hard as he can. Where that ends up, I don't know. I'm not looking for anything great shakes happening out of the House. Although regional transportation is up just a tad to 80% reimbursement out of the House budget. That being said, my personal opinion is, if we could end up at 8 and 1/2, I don't know that we're going to be able to quote unquote, "do better than that" coming out of the two towns. I don't know that Hanson is prepared to meet that, nor Whitman. But I would like to give them something to reach for. And based upon that, I will make a motion to set our assessment at 8 and 1/2%.
Could somebody second it before we go into the discussion?
Oh, second.
Okay, Elliot?
Fred, I understand where you're coming from, but I absolutely, and I understand where both of the towns are. I will not support anything less than a level service budget. Our kids deserve better than that. Our teachers deserve better than that. Every year, we cut it and cut it and cut it, and nothing comes back. We have no programs coming back. Enough is enough. It is bad enough that we're just gonna... Sorry, I try not to get emotional about these things, but I'm really, I have a tendency to just, I'm trying to take my time.
You're all right with that.
Oh, no, because I will swear like a trucker. This is so frustrating. None of us do this for the fun of it. It's, it's not fun to sit up here and, and listen to this and hear it time after time, but I'm not okay with going down to 8 and 1/2%. Absolutely not. And none of us should be, quite frankly.
Chris?
So Jeff, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna take a side on the debate at this moment, but what would 8 and 1/2% look like? Just recap that for us again.
As far as people?
As far, what, just the whole thing? What would 8 and 1/2?
Whole thing at 8 and 1/2 is 1.750748. 292 in stuff, legal substitute lines, lines that we've cut down. 561, 237 in E and D. 897, 511 in people, George, positions.
What was that number, Jeff? I'm sorry.
897, 511, I believe.
Yep.
Thank you. In people.
So that's 20, at 6.5%, that's 26 positions. Those 26, 26 people. Excuse me, at 8 and 1/2, that's 19. At 8 and 1/2, that's 19 people who will not have a job next year. Those will be affected at elementary, there'll be elementary teachers, there'll be middle school teachers, there'll be high school teachers, there'll be paraprofessionals, there'll be duty aides, there will be central office people, facilities people, technologies people, and a part-time elementary music person. So for 17 years, 17 springs, I have done this. I have done this from those seats. I have done this from these seats. For 14 of those springs, I've also done it as a person who lives at 320 Harvard Street in Whitman. It is difficult to play both sides. It is difficult to sit here and say, if you actually care about education, and you want to work with education, and you want to do education, and then you look at these cuts. So this is a struggle. I know it's a struggle for everyone in town. But it does come to the point of, what do you want for the education of your town? I'm getting old, getting gray, almost 50, started in this school system when I was 32 or 33. And this is all I know every single spring. This is it. There's got to be something that we need to collectively work on, because this is all I know. That's all I got.
Anyone else? Mike?
Yeah, I do. So at 8 and, 8 and 1/2, we're, we're cutting 19 positions, this, this, and this. What I don't understand is, no one else, Hanson, Whitman, there's no other cuts anywhere else. There's cuts financially, but I haven't heard, hey, we're losing fire, we're here, police, this is how bad it is. Why is it always constantly coming down to us? And that, that's the frustrating aspect, and that's why I can't agree to 8 and 1/2%. I say no.
I'm not sure if, is Frank still here? Frank? You hiding behind the post over there? Did he leave?
No, he's there.
Are there any, he was asking sort of me, are the towns losing any positions? And I can't speak for you.
In the current budget, the recommendations voted by the Finance Committee would result in one full-time position being reduced to a part-time position. The departments that, well, let me put it this way, all of our contractual raises include significant increases for departments. In order to meet the reduced budget that has been calculated, we're going to be eliminating significant coverage. So we're not going to be laying off police, but we're going to have less police on the road. We're not going to be laying off firemen, but we're going to have less coverage, because we're cutting those budgets. We have not staffed up. With the exception of a year and a half ago, we have not staffed up in either department. We did add four firefighters a year and a half ago. And that's the first add in 40 years. However, we man the departments with overtime. And while we've heard a lot of people be critical about that, as you know, under our county benefits plan, we don't pay benefits for overtime hours. We only pay for base salary. So sometimes it makes more sense to cover shifts and cover time with overtime rather than adding personnel. What we're doing now is we're pulling that back. So if you wanted to use it as equivalence, there's a number. I'm choosing not to do that.
What roughly was the overtime for fire last year? When you're, so rather than hire somebody, what was the overtime budget last year?
About 800.
800,000 dollars?
Yes.
Thank you. Mike, you're still here. Is Hanson losing anybody? If it goes recommended as Finance Committee is recommending? Do you know? I know I'm putting you on the spot. You probably weren't prepared, because this is a different question.
Yeah, thank you. I, I was not prepared. I can say that, no, we are not contemplating any cuts at this point, because most, if not all, of our departments are minimally staffed as it is.
All right. Thank, thank you. I didn't want to answer that question myself.
So, so I think that, I think the challenge to a large extent is just, there's, there's certainly a lack of understanding, right? I, I certainly see some folks talking about the schools are getting 12 and 1/2 or 15%, right? And as Jeff articulated it, we were at, what was the number, 3?
3.66 is an increase for our budget if we stay at 8 and 1/2.
366. So it's 3.66%. And it's a 3.66% increase when, as we've talked about, there are massive requirements on the district, special education and some of these other items that are just huge. So it's just, this, this becomes the problem. I think you get some folks, oh my God, the schools are getting so much money. They're getting all this extra money. They're getting a 12 and 1/2, 15. No, it's 3, and it's 3% to try and cover costs that are just exponentially going through the roof. And, and that's, that's my struggle with all this, right? It's, again, I'm not trying to turn this into a department-by-department struggle, but I don't, I don't think some of those other departments have those same type of crazy increases, where it's just a million-dollar increase year over year in special education alone. So that, that to me becomes the challenge. And I think regardless of where we go, we've got to get a better job of, of getting folks educated. Maybe we got to go to them, because we get a good number here. So thank you for coming, but we still, that message is getting lost. It's, it's not apples to apples.
I was asked that same exact question at a Finance Committee, what makes our department different than police, fire, highway? And my exact answer was, you don't have $8 million worth of unfunded mandates that 3 million gets supplied for, or 3.4%, $3,400,000 gets supplied in. So that was kind of my answer, and it made, because that happens, that, that frequently gets out there, that this department's losing this, and this is, we are, we all provide different services, is what I'm saying. I'm not saying they're not needed services. I'm saying they're different services, so it's, it's hard to compare it that way. Dan?
Just a couple of things that we keep agreement with everybody. We're going, the school has been going backwards, never forward. We do take hits, but the hits are retirements, and we don't replace them, but we still lose positions in the, in the school here. Along with the assessment, people really have to learn that's an assessment. We have Chapter 70 money from the state. We give an assessment to the towns, which due for the education piece, due by the towns to the school district. That's what we have to do to supply a good education. That, that has to be corrected in people's minds. It's like we're saying, right now, it was a 5.6% increase at the 15.1 we started out with. Now we're down to a 3.6%, which is really not that much, and it always comes down to those mandates. And like, you know, Jeff, I mean, if there's a way for like next meeting or something, go back 15 years and show the head counts all the way up to now to show how a reduction has been. That's what the people have to see. We have been taking hits up here. We're the only ones that have been taking the hits. And the, the other part is, you want to go on those mandate parts, it's like what we have discussed before. If you went to the, to the Fire Chiefs and said, you know, we have a new law, it's a mandate, you have to take those ambulances, you have to transport them, you can't charge. We may fund you back. How long would that department last? On, on a hit like that. That's what the school struggles with. We're forced to do things with no money. And they have no plans of ever covering that from the legislation side. And that's about all I have to say right now.
Fred?
I was reminded one day last week, as I got into a spirited conversation with somebody very similar to what you're saying. And the person reminded me of two major things. Number one, dwindling enrollment. It's gone from 4,400, 4,500 students down to about 3,700, 3,800 students. So said, well, jeez, you have a lot less students, so you should need less people. I disagree with the way the formulas work, because you have to lose a whole classroom before you can eliminate a teacher, so you have to have a whole set of kids in the same area. But I was reminded of that. And I was also reminded that three years ago, we did present an override to the towns. What we called a student success budget that failed. That, you know, people quote unquote had spoken. I still disagree, quite frankly, with, you know, what this person was saying in totality. But as we sit here, and it stinks. And this really does stink. Okay? But we also, at the same time, have to recognize the facts that there are so many dollars. And we knew last year that this was happening. And I do understand, at least in my mind, that services are going to get cut. I want to see as much as we can most possibly get, you know, within our assessment. And I'd love to see it be 12 and 1/2%. I just don't know that that's realistic for right now.
Just, just to clarify, our enrollment is 3,906 right now. So we're down, but we're down probably 100 kids, give or take, from the last couple of years. It's been under 4,000. This is the lowest it's been under 4,000 in a while. But from 10, 15 years ago, that was the number that we just assessed in our civil rights audit.
Yeah. We just passed in our civil rights audit yesterday. They need your total count, 3,906.
Okay, because I thought Desi had us at like 3820.
I don't know what to tell you. That's, that's all I got.
But that being said, on that, what I just, Mr. Cully and I had spoken about, this is the differential between class size. People are, well, your class, average class size is 17 to one adults, 17 kids to one adult. In a kindergarten class, we're not going to have 26 kids. In a high school class, it might have 28 or 29. In a PE class, which they count, might have 38 or 40 in related arts. So when those class sizes come out, and people look at the numbers, the eyeball test says a lot. We try to keep our lowest class size K1, 2. You'll see a growth in 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, 9, 10, 11, 12. You might see a high school class of 14 in an AP robotics class, or we don't have robotics, but AP computer programming. But you also might see 32 in a Spanish II class. And those are where we're, we're struggling with our cuts. We want to make sure our base is covered, and it tends to hit the upper grades. But our enrollment is, and very honest, it is diminishing. I don't know what the new housing projects are going to come up, when I see the developments in Hanson and Whitman, and the amount of kids that might be coming in the district in the next five years. We'll work with the numbers we have now. The reductions will have an impact if, if we don't fill positions at 12 and 1/2. Will there be positions within the district outside of teachers that we will lose? It will impact services. So if we, you know, reduce in facilities, we might not have somebody shoveling snow, or answering the phones, or things like that. And I agree with Mr. Small, and just talking about everything as far as looking at our systems. And I think George and I have done a pretty good job this year of looking at our systems and where we can reduce, how we can use our structures better. But we've been in the job eight months, and we're, we're hit at, at this piece. This is the best what we can do. I think coming forward next year, depending where our assessment is, we'll be able to restructure again and look at some different things. But all of this is keeping curriculum solid, and what we've given our teachers as far as tools next year, even in this budget where we're at.
Mr. Bush?
I think 3820 on the October 1. But even with the number you just gave, George, look at the George, look at the increase. And, and we're, we're based on that thirty-eight twenty number for everything we do and what, anyone that comes in during the year. And this is what, you know, stymies us and holds us back. And I always agree with Mr. Howard, I love his, the way he puts it. And Mr. Cully, I appreciate your words as well as yours, Mr. Small. But I, I'm still not ready to move. I think I needed a hear from these folks. I, I, you know, I just want to hold out for one more chance, or one more whatever, because I think we owe it, at least. We've been in this a long, long, long time. This year was, seems much longer than some of the past. You get hit with a couple, Mr. Kane knows where, from he, where he works, you get hit with a couple of placements or something. And that's why I was mentioning the meeting I just came from, because you never know. It's, it can be all over the place. And there's the two that hold the, hold the bag and the string together.
Fred?
I was having a conversation yesterday with a para that works at Whitman Middle. And we currently have, in some classes, twenty-nine students. Classroom will hold thirty. You've got two to a desk. That's this year. Okay? So believe me, I agree, anything less than level services is not right. I just don't know how we get there. That's, that's just my mind, you know? It's wrong, and what we're doing is wrong, you know, to our kids. But you're faced with a set of circumstances. You know, you call up a guy that lost his job, doesn't have any money, and he owes his cop payment, you know, I'm talking to Allie because she's a banker, you know, what do you do? You repossess the cop, you know? Because he can't make his payments, he has no way, he's a nice guy and it's bad circumstances, et cetera. That's what almost I feel like here, it's like you're backed into a corner and you have no choice. I want to give the town something to reach for, but at the same time, trying to realize what sacrifices have been made at the same time.
Dan?
Yeah, following along with Mr. Boyce's saying, I don't think it's time yet to do this. I think, you know, I would like to attend the Board of Selectment FinCon and meet next Wednesday. And on Wednesday, we're going to have to come up with a number. You can't go to town floor.
Yeah.
At the last minute, it's unfair to the FinCons of both towns, to, to work out something like that. It's, it's been going along this year, I think, because this is the worst it's probably been in a long time. Realistically, we're, we're going to end up making cuts. It's not what we want to do, but, you know, you, you can't drop it right now until we have that final number.
And we're jumping around a little bit, but on the topic of enrollments, because I hear that all the time too. Enrollments are down, enrollments are down. Look at the last ten years. Look at, look at how much enrollments are down. I would encourage, and I will, I will take them with me. Anyone that thinks that it's just about enrollment, come sit in the classroom.
Absolutely.
So, right, we saw, we were sitting in that middle school classroom, twenty-four students, no para. The, the delivery of educational services today compared to what it was is night and day. I've only been on this committee three years, right? The first tour I took, I was blown away. Some of, some of the folks that are making these comments about enrollments, you've got to come to a classroom, you've got to see what that classroom is like today. It is not about when these buildings were designed fifty years ago, and you could put this many in a classroom, and this is what they would hold. That was great thirty, forty, fifty years ago. The world has changed a lot. And the social, emotional requirements that are, exist today is completely different than, I think it's different than two years ago, let alone five, ten, twenty. So that enrollment number, it's one piece of data, but there are a whole bunch of other pieces that you've got to look at. It can't just be about enrollment.
Fred? I'm going to talk about a shot because you stand in there very patiently.
Sort of lost my train of thought a little bit. Uh huh. You know, but just, I'm going to concede my time. Go off topic, so.
Okay. Sean?
I was just going to speak to how it might be that schools are going to lose some services and some people, but at least in Whitman, how town departments might not. Not too long ago, when we were thinking about a town wanting to override, all departments were really arguing together, you know, collectively pushing for an override. And then a department meeting was had, and then coming away from that meeting, those departments were going to walk away with, with the things that they kind of wanted with an override. Fire Department isn't actively pushing for an override right now. It's not on their mind. They're pretty happy with the status quo if things move forward in a, kind of a predictable way, six and a half, you know, something like that. But with the debt exclusion, I think that's important to think about. Why is the debt exclusion important to the, the dynamics of that meeting? And I can only deduce this, that for the last so many years, when they had to pay the, it's kind of complicated, but just in plain language, the town of Whitman is paying a big note out of free cash. So if you had to pay eight hundred thousand dollars a year out of free cash, you might do a little bit to make sure that you had that money in free cash to pay the bill. So you might inflate your budget a little bit to make sure that that's the case. I think that's reasonable. So if you were going to move that, that note outside of the levy with a debt exclusion, then that might allow you to bring your budgets back down without having to lay anybody off. So I think that the plan that's in place is the debt exclusion first, so they can move that money around without losing people, and then the override second. The problem with doing that is the schools can't do that. You just, you're going to have to cut away people. And, and I think that's the, the kind of hidden dynamic that's going on. Nobody here has mentioned override like, like it's just off the table. And I'm not exactly sure why that is. Sustainability, a big piece of sustainability should be an override. It should be an appropriate override, you know, well thought out override. And I feel like just to, just to say, yeah, it's going to happen next year, that's conceding a pretty big action, you know? I don't know if that's in the best interest of the schools.
I think part of it is, Sean, I understand what you're talking about, but that's at a town level, which is more or less out of our care and control. We have to try to stay on point with what we're going to do with assessment, although that's all good language. And we've got to make a determination here whether we're going to change our system.
I think that's a good point, that, in a sense, that is out of control. But your assessment isn't out of your control. What you need is within your control. What you recommend to the town is within your control, based on like some of those things that you're talking about. How come we're losing people and other people aren't? Those are reasonable questions. It doesn't seem equitable. You know, money is money, how, it's funny how the money is kind of distributed, but understand the dynamics of how that works, and it's kind of complex, you still, a school's going to lose people, other departments aren't. You can't control whether or not they decide for an override or not. You can decide whether or not you recommend twelve and a half or six and a half.
Right.
What they do to finance that is on them, it's out of your control.
Wait a minute, Fred, I see you.
And with all due respect, I don't think that we're ready for an override. I think if we try to put an override together right now, it's rushed, it's quick, and it doesn't address our needs sufficiently. All we're going to do is try for an override to survive. And I don't think that, and this is my personal opinion, I don't think that's the course of action to take, to just be in survival mode. I look at what we did a few years ago, and granted, it failed, the student success budget. But you had a dedicated group of people, I believe you were included in that group, that got together and gave a good push. Now, what I envision, and with all due respect to the towns of Whitman and Hanson, I don't hold anything to letting them steer the ship. I look at it as our responsibility to steer that ship. Okay? We sat back, we heard that there's going to be an override, not going to be an override, you're going to get ten percent. No, we're talking four percent. This is what's been coming out of our FinCon. This has been going on the past three or four months, and it's put us in a position where here we are right now. Okay? Where we don't know what to assess, and we're looking at, hey, let's have a meeting next week to try and see what we can grovel and get. Okay? And it stinks. It really, really stinks. But if we can turn around and come up with a proper plan and present it properly to the taxpayers and the voters of both Whitman and Hanson, I'd like to think of the good in the people, and that they care about the kids in this community, and that they'll come out to the polls when we show them what our real needs are. Have the time and say, here it is. What would you like to do? What do you want your community to be? And give them the opportunity to fund our programs properly, not just survive. That's what I want to see happen.
I agree. And I, I think the difference between being proactive and reactive is significant. A plan allows you to be proactive. I will say that there are some people that benefit from this type of negotiation of it being reactive, last minute. If you keep it last minute, then the chances of an override passing decrease. Therefore, there's a disincentive to not plan. We keep saying we're in the same situation over and over again, and we keep not planning. The answer to this, I think, conundrum is the planning. The planning allows you to be proactive so that you can effectively meet in the summer and know what to predict in the spring.
No, no, the fall, we do this in the fall. We don't wait till the spring. We do it, we control it, and we get it done in the fall.
No, I think we could do it.
We don't wait till next spring and we're in the same situation.
I was just talking in general.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Of the budget cycle.
A little passionate here.
I feel you. Thanks.
Thanks, Sean. Okay, so just hearing what you said, Mr. Small, are you withdrawing your motion for eight and a half percent?
I'll table it.
No, you have to withdraw, I have to withdraw the second, then the motion unless you want to.
I can withdraw the second.
I'll withdraw.
Okay. It's been suggested by several members and that we wait until the Finance Committees in the Selectmen meet. Mike, you guys meet next Tuesday?
Yes. This agenda has been slower discussion, it's not on the agenda at this point.
And Frank, same thing?
Put it out, put it on, it's only Wednesday night.
I'm not working over there.
Okay, yeah.
Our budget is on every agenda we have.
Okay. So it's next Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
FinCon's the same one, too.
Okay. So you're making a motion, somebody that we table us till next Wednesday at the next school committee meeting? Is that what I've heard?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Do we need to make a motion to table?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do it as a vote.
Okay. So table, the motion to table further discussion of our assessment until our next meeting on Wednesday.
Today is the twenty-fourth.
We have additional information.
It'll be even the thirty-first, if there's thirty-one in the.
May first.
May first. May first.
May first.
Yep.
Okay. Have a motion to second.
Can we also perhaps post an emergency meeting for May third, just in case?
What day of the week is that?
Friday night.
I will be out of town.
Or.
But I mean, do it, I'm just saying, I will be out of town.
Or the second on that Thursday night.
I can't do a second.
You just. Why not six o'clock the night of town meeting? Will that help us? I'm just thinking.
Feels like that's where it's going, doesn't it?
More availability.
You better do it at.
Really kicking the ball down the road here, guys and ladies. I think, I was kind of thinking that the towns would have been happier for us not to wait.
Understandable.
But I understand.
Or do we want to do Monday and Wednesday? No, no, you can do Monday because you.
You've got to do it after when they meet. You've got to do it after Tuesday, so we can be at both meetings.
Mr. Chairman?
I hate kicking the skin down the road.
Whether we vote tonight or next week, mine's the same. I'm not changing it. I don't, this is ridiculous.
Mike?
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, if the school committee is interested in my board having a discussion regarding reopening their position on the contribution to the district, it would be a lot easier for that discussion to take place knowing where this board stands right now. If this board stands, if this board continues to stand at twelve and a half percent, is that my understanding?
Well, that would be it, Mike, if we just table us and we adjourn, that would be, we would still be at twelve and a half percent.
Okay.
If that happens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
I'd like to reopen my, my motion for eight and a half percent assessment.
Okay.
See if there's a second.
Second anywhere?
I'll second.
Mr. Boyce seconded it? We had quite a bit of discussion, is there any further renewed discussion, Chris? Go ahead.
I'll start some further discussion, why not? This is.
Go ahead.
Groundhog Day in the meeting. So I think to Mr. McHugh's point, if he's looking, and I'm going to speak for myself, if he's looking for some indication of a willingness to do something, speaking for myself, as long as I see some equity across all departments, including the schools, then I would be willing to have a conversation in regards to the number. I think if there's a lack of equity, then that's where personally I'm going to continue to struggle with, all the conversation we've heard tonight, why is it on the back of the school system? So I will, I don't know if that helps, but that's, that's my.
It doesn't. Because I'm pretty sure that either one of the town administrators is not going to tell you there's going to be equity and they're going to lay off department ads because it's out of their care and control as far as they have to get a vote from a board. Although I understand your frustration totally. Remember, I'm just trying to keep us all up here here. Mr. Boyce?
I remember the superintendent asking for equity just with what South Shore Botec was getting for an increase. I mean, why would that not be the same for us?
What was that?
Now, I would say, South Shore got three point one. Eight and a half for us is three point six-six, okay?
So we get already.
But what I will say, and to their, they have to budget for capital. They don't do special education out of district. We do special education out of district, which is hands down much more than certain capital projects.
Gotcha.
Well, I think.
There's equity, but not equity.
Right, right.
I think you'll agree. Again, it's like, it's a different school.
Absolutely.
It's a different setting. They have different rules, so it's hard to, as much as you'd like to say it should be one hundred percent. It's a different, another different entity. Police is different, fire's different, highway's different, school's different, and social botec is also different. Fred?
Not that I've read very deeply into this, but the town of Franklin, their school department's facing a two point five million dollar cut, you know, from, from their budget. So, you know, it's, it's happening all around us, unfortunately, but.
Well, after hearing Mr. McHugh and Mr. Lyndham, and just talking out loud before we voted on this eight and a half, it appears that they'd like to see us maybe come off of the twelve and a half, and I'm not saying to do that, I'm just saying, and I'm not saying to go to eight and a half either, is, is there a helpful number somewhere in between? I'm not trying to push this committee right or left, I'm trying to come up with something because we are moving closer and closer to town meeting by the minute. And I know we're going to have another meeting next Wednesday. Chris, I know you're anguishin' over there, I can feel it all the way over here.
I mean, I totally agree with your point. I, I think there, the towns are looking for some indication that we're going to work with.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And we're looking for some indication, indication that it's going to be somewhat equitable, so that, that's the, the struggle.
I mean, I'll take the vote right now on the eight and a half, and see where it goes, and then we, like I said, we're at twelve and a half if the eight and a half fails. Is there any further discussion on the eight and 1/2? Michelle, you want?
No.
Well, I thought you had your hand up.
The glasses are on, so I can take them.
I was looking for new information, I was hoping you had it.
I don't know.
Okay. Okay, have a motion to second to lower the assessment to 8.5. All of those in favor? All of those opposed?
Put up two hands.
All of those abstaining? Okay.
No abstentions.
Would have to been 2/3 anyway.
Yes. Excuse me. Are there any other suggestions? Mr. O'Brien?
So, I want to ask a question first. Jeff, do you, do you have any idea how many, how do I put it, retirements we'd be looking at?
Yeah. All our charts. I've got more paper, I'm looking at this a lot. We have, right now, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 retirements in districts. Right now. We have a couple of resignations, 3 resign, 4 resignations, and these are teachers, paris, duty aides, and other personnel.
So, because I, I'm just going by the chart you gave me here. So, 10 and 1/2, Jeff, if we had to throw a 10 and 1/2 out there just for discussion purp, I'll make a motion for 10 and 1/2 so we can have discussion on it.
Second.
So...
Okay, go ahead, we have a motion, I heard somebody second it. Mike?
So, my, just so we can discuss it, so...
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So, how would a 10 and 1/2 factor with what we're looking at with retirements and things like that? I mean, and I know you, you don't have the crystal ball and stuff, I get it.
I'm looking at positions and what you see here, we kind of drafted, scripted it out.
So, the, so the retirements are already stripped out of this?
Yeah.
All right.
Already, already moved some people around.
All right, all right.
Because I also want to stress that in years past, we have forsaken retirements. We call them positions, and everyone in the community says they don't need it. So, in our figuring of this out, we're talking about the loss of people. One year you're working, one year you're not. Irrelevant to me if you're working and you resign, you retire, you get non-renewed, you become a budget, you become a lump of money. So, we're talking about persons, we're no longer talking about positions, which we did for the last 16 springs.
Mike, that was the point to my question, the retirement stuff has already been...
Already in the...
Yeah, that's put in.
Okay.
But, as you look at that, you're looking at where those folks fall within the chain of education within our district.
Difference, right.
That's where we're at at 10 and 1/2, we kind of scripted this out for you.
Nope, that, that's fine, okay. Thank you.
Fred? Mr. Boyce?
Yes, so, okay, so, that is 453,841 less.
Than the 897 at eight and 1/2, correct.
Okay. Less than where we are right now.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. And it leaves 400,000 in E and D, which is like danger...
I know, I know. I know, I know. It's, is, and I already heard Mr. Small's legislative report, and thank you, I, I really didn't know what was going on, except seeing that they had all these amendments. Of course, the closed-door meeting makes sense for what they do on Beacon Hill. You can almost grasp that we've got to get something from there. That's, you know, that's always, let's bring out the math and the chalkboards and everything, and that's always the area where we put the line, this plus whatever that additional would be equals what we need. But, we don't know what that number is. We can probably estimate it to be this 453,841, and not touching our stuff, not touching any more E and D or anything. And I think, Christine, if I'm correct, when we close the books totally in August, well, that would be double dipping, really, never mind, sorry. I always think it would...
Don't take more out of E and D.
Yeah.
Well, depending what goes back in, you still can.
Yeah, right, you can't...
I know, I know what you're talking about.
I'm saying double dipping because next year would be a double dip year if...
Yeah, no, exactly.
Then you're really in trouble.
I wouldn't hope, or...
But, is there, as a, if I was, if we were to go, is there any hope that the state would give us an additional 121,000? Yeah, there's hope, there's hope.
There's a chance.
All right, and maybe we put some, I don't know, percentages near here or what, to get up to 800, 453,841, I almost can see that. I don't know if I'm voting for it or not, but I can almost see that.
Putting it out there for discussion, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it was good.
Because I, I think it's a reasonable...
Well, we all sat around here for a reason tonight. We didn't sit around just, you know, water and chit-chat. We obviously wanted to know and hear. So, you mentioning something, if, if Chris or Mr. Jones mentioned something different, I got all night, I think. Yeah, the cats are fit.
Fred?
But, the thing is, is, I'm sorry, I'm really sorry, I apologize.
Go ahead.
The thing is, is that we just know something's coming, it's in there, it's in one of these, at least the 1, 2, 3 numbers maybe, we just don't know about the 453. That's, that's, that's my piece, Mr. Chairman.
Tracy, please don't put in the paper that Boyce has got a crystal ball.
I have none.
Yeah.
The cats, I'll send you pictures. Cats of the week.
He's got a laugh because, I mean, this is getting ugly.
I hate to put Christine on the spot. What did you carry for regional transportation reimbursement for a percentage?
I think it's up to 80 percent.
Well, it's, the House came out at 80, but what did you carry when you...
I carried whatever the governor had. What did he have, 78 percent?
No, I think 72, I thought. 72 or 75, maybe.
So, I carried what he had. Because we've been through this before.
You don't know until...
We don't know until July. So, we've put in before, we've moved it up when the House has changed from what the governor has said, and then it ends up being lower.
Right.
So, that's a danger, too, so...
Yeah.
Because if, if it comes in higher, that money can go right back into replenish E and D the next year.
I think that there's a very strong sense of at least holding to the 80 percent this year. You know, it passed the House, I mean...
Yeah.
The Senate's usually a little bit more generous, and receipts are up. So, you could be looking, Mr. Boyce, to answer some of your questions, an additional 70,000.
Okay, that's a start.
Governor's budget was $20 per pupil, you know, we're looking at, 30 came out of the House, I can't see that going backwards, I did beg Senator Brady...
That's about 40, that's about 39,000.
38, 39,000.
So, we've, we've almost reached the 121.
Charter school reimbursement, they're playing with the formula, I don't know how that would affect us.
Well, if we went from 30 to 50 on per pupil, you know, it's 20 times 39...
It's 70-something thousand.
Right.
No.
Okay. Have a motion to second on, Chris, go ahead.
So, for Jeff, because when you rattled through the eight and 1/2 and what the world would look like at eight and 1/2, at 10 and 1/2, you mentioned something about some changes to the legal cost, and I, I want to clarify, was that outside of that, or...
That was part of the 292 that we originally cut...
Okay, got it.
From December's budget.
Okay, so, that's not, that's not, we can't find that. But, at eight and 1/2, what, what are we looking at, people-wise?
19 positions.
I'm sorry, at 10 and 1/2, at 10 and 1/2, hit the 10 and 1/2.
Each...
Sorry, I already made you do the exercise at eight and 1/2, let's do the exercise at 10 and 1/2.
10 and 1/2, you're looking at...
You're looking at...
Nine or 10?
12.
12.
Off your sheet.
Oh, 12.
9, 10, 11, 12, 13, I got it. Right? 8, 7, 8.
About 12, John?
11 and 12.
11, I think, my math was around 11 based upon the sheet, but...
11.
Okay. The public doesn't have the sheet, so I just want to make sure they know what we're looking at.
And those are all at different salary levels. And that's, it was important for us to look at.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the 10 and 1/2? Because I have a motion and a second on the floor. Open it out here if anybody's got anything different or new to say.
John Galvin, High Street Whitman. First of all, I want to commend the members of the Whitman Finance Committee that are still here. This is posted on the Whitman website, this is the Article 2 that they proposed, it's there for anybody to see. If you take a look at several of the gen, you know, just say the general, you look at Town Hall, General Government, voted 2019, little over $2 million. Proposed by the Finance Committee, up 0.1 percent. Basically, level funded, not level services, level funded. Please Fire, DPW, Public Safety, voted 2019, $7 million, thereabout. Proposed by the Finance Committee, $6,800, down 2 and 1/2 percent. Cut their budget. That's Please Fire. You look at Health Department, Veterans, Human Services, funded 641 in 2019, proposed by the Finance Committee, 622. I know what you're looking for, I'm in, I've been fighting to try to get schools, but I don't know where you're going to get it, guys, ladies. It isn't here. Without a 2 and 1/2 override, you can set it at anywhere you want, and come to the town floor, town meeting with as many people as you want, and try to get it up to where you want it, but somewhere in here, it's got to come out. So, if you're going to go in there and say, fight and bring everybody in there and say 10 and 1/2 percent, then somewhere in here, where the Finance Committee's already been working real hard, somebody's got to come out. Just to get this, to get you to eight and 1/2, they opened up the non-mandated busing, this is going to be an issue. Most of the selectmen aren't in favor for that getting cut. I commend their bold, you know, trying to go through and find a way to get you to eight and 1/2 percent. Eight and 1/2 percent is, if you can get that, I don't know where else, you know, how much more you think you can get, because it's not in here.
Anyone else, Judge? Sean?
Just a quick response. I appreciate John, John's at a lot of meetings, and I think he's thorough and pays attention. But, just to speak to the point I was making earlier about how much each department sends back to free cash, if you go back to 2018, you look at the actuals, so not what, not what would, not what was voted, but what was expended, and you see how much each gave back to the, to free cash, and total General Government gave back $100,000 to free cash. If you look at the total Public Safety, they gave back $240,000 to free cash. If you look at the DPW, they gave back $110,000. If you look back at, at the, basically, insurance, which is the uncl, you know, and unclassified is the big one, it's like $240,000 they gave back to free cash. So, each of these was giving a, a good amount of money back, and I think in many ways so they can make sure that they were paying the bill for the, the police department. So, it looks like on paper, obviously, they are making cuts, but you can see how it doesn't translate to people. And that gets lost in the translation, I think there are nuances there that are hard to understand, but I think it's our job to dig deep to really truly understand all of those nuances, because creating equity, their argument's going to be, we're getting cuts and you're getting more money, obviously. And your argument is, but we're losing people and you aren't. So, how you, how you bridge that gap is difficult, but it needs to be bridged.
I think part of my answer, Sean, to how you bridge that gap is, this is a, you're not talking apples to apples. This is a completely different service industry than what Police, Fire, or DPW does, and I think that's part of the gap that you bridge. It's pretty easy to, to sit right down and say, we have $8 million in mandates, how many mandates do you have? You'll hear exactly what you're hearing now, silence. That's part of how you bridge that gap. It's, it's hard to compare it, and I'm not saying they should hurt, too. I'm not saying it should be, they've got to lose bodies for it to be right. I'm just saying that it's, it's a different, it's, it's a little bit different.
I would just say that there's many arguments you can make about the school, and one of them is that maybe they should be more efficient. Whatever, I think people should be writing books about how efficient we are, or how efficient we're going to become over the next three years. I'm all for that. But, one argument that can't be made is that the school system gets too much money. We don't get too much money, the per pupil expenditure isn't high compared to other people. You can look at that number, and you can't make the, the argument that you're overfunded. That, that to me is the fundamental argument, I keep saying that. I think that's a key piece of the, of the argument, that you don't have enough funding compared to other districts. You can't make that argument. You could say how things evolved over time compared to other town departments and all those sorts of things, but you don't have that much money compared to other departments, and you need more money, period. There should be an override. There isn't. That's not your fault, but that's the case, and you're, I think you're in a position where you need more funds, period. Now, you pit it against other departments, which is terrible, and I don't think that should be the case. It should be an override, a town-wide override, so it's a positive thing, but that's why this, this is so complex, you know?
Fred?
Just want to say, I couldn't agree with you more about what you said, we need more money, the proof is in the pudding, we spend less on administration than anybody around, we're within the bottom 10 or 15 of 351 school districts on what we spend per pupil, okay? We quite frankly should be ashamed of ourselves in one respect, to a very large respect, and the other respect, maybe tap ourselves on the back and say, look what we do with less. But, I said this four years ago at a meeting, I said, what do we do when the wheels fall off the bus? And the wheels are falling off the bus now. But, you know, what you're saying is 110 percent accurate, we were seventh from the bottom at that time.
John?
Yeah, I know what you're, what you're saying as far as the under, un...
Funded.
Funded mandates, thank you. And, and honestly, I think we all know that, that's the main issue, and you guys have said that over and over again, that there's a, there's a fault at the state level, and maybe even the federal level, because I've seen some stuffs about federal trying to get involved with helping funding. And Fred, I appreciate everything you do at that state level, but that's where our fight needs to be. You know, the, a prop 2 and 1/2 override, that's great, that maybe will fix next year, but what are we going to do the year after that when your spending for, you know, the, the spending goes up again that we can't control? And how, how are the taxpayers supposed to support that? You know, you're going to go, we're going to go back for another 2 and 1/2 override after that? I mean, we may not even get the first one. You know, I mean, we, most of us are on the social media pages, and we see what go on there, and, you know, the selectmen from Whitman can say, they had this, their survey or whatever, that was 1,100 people, random people that, that responded to that. That has nothing to do with the demographics of the town. They say 68 percent said that they would support an override of some sort. That was 1,100 random people, that has nothing to do with what the town thinks. Cool information, but it's not relevant to anything. Until we can get, you know, and, and I see the stuff that you put out on social media, and, you know, we need to get to, I, I don't know what we do, but it has to be fixed at the state level, the towns are not going to be able to support this this year, next year, or the year after that.
And I will say that our legislators, okay, Josh Kotler, Ally Sullivan, Senator Brady, they are in our corner. They file legislation, they file amendments, I spoke to Senator Brady earlier today.
And both of them are amazing, you know, I responded...
And they're trying.
And they emailed me back and say, we voted for it, this, that, all that, they're great.
The hard part is, okay, and I'm just going to say it the way it needs to be said, they have to preach to the altar of the Speaker. And what the Speaker decides what's going to happen, and they put it behind closed doors, and I get the sense that he sits, comes out and says, hey, guys, this is how you're going to vote. That's the only thing I can think of, because you look at some of those amendments, and you look at some of the legislation, you look at how many co-sponsors there are, and how many people sign on, but then when a push comes to shove, all of a sudden, they're not voting for it. You know, because they're being told not to, and you don't know how they voted because it's behind closed doors, just being told that they didn't pass.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on 10 and 1/2. We are also going to meet next Wednesday to reconvene again. If there's no new information, I'm going to move to the vote.